Hello, everyone. This is Lauren Steiner and welcome to tonight's edition of the Robust Opposition. This is yet another in my series of candidate interviews with wonderful people here in Asheville who are running for city council. And tonight, my guest is Nina Tobish. Welcome to my show, Nina.
Thank you so much, Lauren. It's a pleasure to be with you.
Well, I'm gonna let you have the floor for the beginning because you are going to tell the viewers a little bit about your background. I always ask this question first. You know where you grew up, what your educational background was, your professional background, how long you've been in Asheville, the kinds of things you've been involved in before we get to your qualifications for office and your platform. So take it away.
Well, first, I want to reassure your viewers that despite the fact that I'm in color, not black and white, and that my trademark round purple glasses are nowhere to be found, it is indeed I, Nina Tobish. I am a Yankee born. I grew up in progressive circles in Boston, Massachusetts area. I lived for almost 20 years in Washington DC before I moved to Asheville. It'll be 10 years and one week on Election Day, November 8th. So I've been in Asheville for just about 10 years and moving here was probably one of the best decisions I've ever made. I moved here because of the lively, eclectic, a little bit funky, a little eccentric vibe of the city, the creative, competent, quirky folks who are generous and compassionate and who lived here for the beautiful environment. And these are the concerns and causes that I want to serve as a member of city council. I've had an unusual career trajectory. I've been self-employed most of my life. After graduating from college, I went to work for a consulting firm as a writer and editor. I learned a tremendous amount about business in the process of that job. I then went on to study photography and become a freelance photographer. I was also doing business communications as a writer. I went to graduate school and got an MFA in visual studies. My thesis work, my thesis show included artist books that I created, limited edition handmade books, as well as the program's first interactive computer program. And I went from there to work for the Smithsonian Art Museum as, the Smithsonian American Art Museum, as their first new media producer. I produced their first exhibition website pages. I brought events like a digital atelier to the Smithsonian. I created, I was the lead internal producer for the CD-ROM of the collection, which was an international award-winning piece of software. So I then went freelance again, doing interactive design and development with my own firm, Lucid Design. And one of the signature accomplishments of that part of my career was working on a set of standalone kiosks for the Folger Shakespeare Library, which combined my love of language and drama and beautiful artwork and cultural documents and Shakespeare. And it was just a wonderful opportunity to do that. It's important to note that throughout and during all of this time, I remained...
You are frozen. Nina? Can you hear me? Let me check my phone and see if you're frozen in my phone. Actually, let me check up here. Sorry, viewers. Let me see if she's still going. Actually, let me check up here. Nope, she's frozen. Nina? If you can hear me, maybe you should log out and log back in. I'm not sure if you can hear me. Let me see if I can send you a text. Actually, let me call you on the telephone. Sorry about that, viewers. Hello, Nina. We are, I'm calling you live on my show. Oops, wait a minute, it's connecting. Very strange. This has never happened before. I wonder why she, maybe she's still talking and she doesn't realize that she's not on the air. Hello, Nina. I don't know if you realize this, but you got frozen a couple of minutes ago and we can't hear what you're saying. So what I wanted you to do was to log out. Wait, are you calling me here? Hello? You're frozen. Do you think you can log out and come back in? Yes, alright, try. Okay, guys. Well, live TV, what can I tell you? I've lost a few viewers. We've had a few people tuning in. I would just ask you to stand by because Nina is going to try to come back in. She was very interested in what she was saying. But for some reason, I don't know what happened with the internet connection. So we'll just give it a few minutes and I might as well promote my upcoming shows. So on Monday night, I'm going to be doing a show at 9:00 PM Eastern Time with college students who are unionizing on their campus. And my college, Wesleyan University, was what alerted me to this and it was the first student union that was voluntarily recognized, okay, here she is, by the college. Okay, you're back.
Okay. Were you able to hear me if you weren't able to see? Nothing?
No, we had about two minutes of me blabbering on and on about why I couldn't hear you, couldn't see you. I mean, we saw you, but you were frozen.
Oh dear, I'm so sorry that that happened. I have no idea why. Nothing changed on my end. I couldn't tell that anything was wrong.
Okay, well, where were you? Do you remember where you left off?
I don't know where, when I froze up, so I don't know where I was in my story.
Well, I was sharing the show, so I was really half paying attention. I have to tell you, viewers, I do do that in the first couple of minutes to the different Asheville groups that I am a member of. So anyway, why don't we just take it to the next question, which will lead you into why you got involved and how you got involved in civic life in Asheville, any boards or commissions that you might have served on, and what caused you to decide to run for city council?
Okay. Well, actually, I was just getting to that in my monologue, so that's a good point for me to pick up. I started going to city council meetings around, I want to say, I don't know, three, four years ago, something like that. Might be a little, little longer. Just because, you know, I care about what happens in this city, which I love. And the issue that I call the spark that lit the fuse that ended up with me ultimately running for city council was that the decision by city council to allow the conditional zoning, which permitted the sale of the Flatiron Building, so that a place that had been an anchor of local businesses became yet another hotel. And of course, that transition is still underway. But it was a huge blow to an important iconic presence of local small businesses and professionals at the heart of downtown. And I connected up with a whole bunch of folks who felt similarly about this prospect of this loss. And we fought as hard as we could and unfortunately, there was a 4-3 vote the second time it came to council. It went from 3-4 without a vote to 4-3 with a vote. And unfortunately, that was a loss that represented what I consider to be one of the chief problems with the way city council does business. Decisions get made prior to meetings and all the public comment in the world doesn't affect votes. Decisions are already made when council members come to the dais and residents have limited opportunity to influence those decisions early enough in the process to make a difference.
Well, I want to influence your decision to tilt your screen up because you're cutting off half your forehead. Can you see your framing there?
I can. It's, I'm trying not to look at myself too much because it's distracting. So remind me, I have a, I have a cat who has to lie in front of my monitor and he leans on it and please just remind me again if it happens again.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Sorry, I'm getting a little discombobulated. I forgot to put myself back in the shot there. So, okay, so you decided that that's what you, you want? Because this puts me in mind of what Will Hornaday suggested yesterday when I interviewed him, which is that by the time something gets to public comment, it is too late. And he was talking about having more, I guess he used the word town halls in different areas of the city to try to seek public comment in advance of these decisions being made. And we also talked a little bit about transparency and accountability and the fact that as soon as the pandemic was over, which it's really not, but you know, we were kind of trying to go back to normal. And they started meeting in person. They stopped allowing people to comment over the telephone, which was a lot easier for people. And why shouldn't they continue to allow that? So maybe before we talk about the issues, because normally I would get into what you think are the three biggest problems affecting Asheville residents and how you would solve them. But since you kind of led into this accountability issue and transparency, why don't you talk about how you would, if elected, sort of reform the way the council operated?
This is my, this is my signature, this is the signature of my platform. I do not believe that the major challenges that our city faces, we're at a crossroads on so many important challenges for the future. None of them will be solved properly unless and effectively and to the satisfaction of the residents of Asheville, unless city council starts doing its business differently. And by differently, I mean in a responsive, inclusive, transparent and accountable manner. That means, that means doing the people's work in public. That means having conversations about policy.
Okay, now we lost her. I don't know what's happening with her computer. Wait, she's back. Okay.
I'm so sorry. I have no idea what happened there. I just tried to come right back in.
Well, you're back in, so that, go on.
So the goal is to ensure that we have a true open meeting policy. Open meetings are the law in North Carolina, as long as a significant portion of the people in the room are trying to do public business, those meetings need to be open to the public. City council has been trying to get around this with so-called private check-ins. And I think there's a very good argument to be made that that way of doing business is not only not helpful to the public, but also probably not legal as well. I would like to see us stop doing that. I think that a government that does not facilitate the participation of its citizenry is not a democracy. We need to be able to see our public officials, our public servants, doing the public's business. We need to be able to have our voices heard early enough in the process that they can actually influence the folks who are making the decisions on our behalf. And while I have also, I've long been a proponent of getting out into the neighborhood and a little later, I'd like to talk to you about my pledges around these issues. I think it's really important for us to understand that also inviting people in and being open to hear their views while policy is being formulated, while city staff is gathering the information that we need to make decisions that are based on data and facts, we also need to hear from people's lived experiences, from their perspectives, from their point of view. And if you don't do that, if you don't actively encourage that kind of participation, people's trust in government is eroded. They don't understand how their representatives arrive at the decisions that they make. And they feel disconnected and alienated from government. And that's a vicious cycle. And we've seen it over the last decade, getting worse and worse and worse with people not trusting their government because they don't feel that they actually have any genuine voice in it. On the local level, this is even more important because at the local level, so many more decisions are made that directly immediately impact people's lives. So as a council member, I'm going to be out in community, talking to neighborhood associations, visiting community centers where people gather. I'll be there to listen, to answer questions as best I can, to find out what's on people's minds, to take take from them their, their concerns and their responses to issues of the day and to make sure that those are incorporated in our understanding of what the best way is to move forward.
Okay, so I'm going to put you on the spot here because some people may think that the mayor is the chief executive of the council, if you will. And in businesses, anyway, chief executives sort of set the tone. Do you think the mayor should be replaced? And if so, who do you support? And a corollary to that question is the manager, the city manager, Deborah Campbell. There's been a lot of complaints I've seen in newspaper articles about staff leaving, feeling that they haven't been listened to. Yes, to some extent, it's a matter of salary. But also, it's a matter of feeling that their voices matter. So what do you think on those two positions?
Well, first of all, I disagree with the characterization of the mayor as the chief executive. That's not how it works. In our city council, we have six council members and then the seventh seat is the mayor. But decisions of city council are by majority. The mayor doesn't have any special leverage. It happens that Mayor Manheimer has had now several terms of experience. She's a very intelligent, savvy political person. And she has leveraged her experience and her connections extremely effectively in service of her own views. That's indisputably the case. When it comes to the city manager, so the, 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 the way it's supposed to work in this so-called weak mayor structure, where we have city council and a city manager, is that the city manager is supposed to be the person who directs city staff according to the instructions of city council. So it's a two-step process. City council is supposed to pass the ordinances and regulations and set policy and then give direction to the city manager. But city council is not permitted to reach in to city staff and direct them directly. So it's a, it's this slightly, it's slightly a game of telephone. And there's a bit of a buffer between the elected representatives and city staff. And that puts the city manager in a position both of great responsibility, but also of great authority in terms of being the person who gives directives and manages the activities of city staff. It's not, in many cases, perhaps not the ideal structure. The alternative structures where you have a strong executive mayor who actually does reach in and manage and appoint people with political appointments and so forth. There are proponents of that structure as well, but it also has some serious downsides to it as well.
Well, I mean, as far as these employees that are leaving because they don't feel respected, regardless of whether city council can work directly with those employees or not, they are directing the manager. And if the manager is not managing her employees well, is there a time, is it time to make change? I mean, these are the questions that you're going to have to be confronted with if you're sitting on the council.
Certainly. I think, I believe that the current manager has only been with us a couple of years, two, two or three at the most, if I'm not mistaken. That sounds like a long time, but in the history of Asheville, that's a relatively short tenure. And because city council has turnover in its seats, the directives that come from council are always shifting as well. I do think that it is the responsibility of council to seriously monitor and stay on top of the choices that the city manager is making. And were I on council, I would be asking for a very regular stream of reporting. For example, I was shocked to learn recently that there isn't even, to my knowledge, a monthly tracking of city expenditure against the city budget. Which honestly, I find sort of stunning. You would think that that would be part of business as usual for a city management to track that sort of thing. And it helped me to understand in some degrees how it could be possible that, for example, we could lose $2 million worth of revenue because we weren't getting income from city parking because there was an IT problem that went undealt with for months.
Eight hundred thousand dollars. That's a big number.
Well, it ends up actually amounting to, you know, more than that. And how was there no, first of all, what kind of contract do you have with a provider that doesn't have a clause in it about downtime and compensation for systems not working? And I mean, that baffles me just to begin with. And then when you see that happening, because certainly you would notice income not coming in, right? Why was there not a plan B? Like, let's just hire some bodies to stand there and collect the flat fee for everyone coming into the, I mean, at least you could have put, you could put, could have put a floor under the, under these losses much, I mean rapidly. So I, and I was listening, I was listening to the response of the city manager being, well, you know, next time we'll be sure to, you know, let you know. I'm like, how is it that city council did not know that this was happening? And how was there not a multi-level system of backup plans for for situations like that? Frankly, I found that quite shocking.
Well, you know, you're very diligent. And I have to say, of all the candidates I've interviewed so far, you're the one who I see engaging the most in, well, I think it's pretty much exclusively Asheville politics where I see you post. And you post a lot of ideas and you post a lot of questions and it's clear that you're very inquisitive. And you really want to research everything that's out there because you take your role very seriously or your, your potential role. And, you know, I've learned at my advanced age that there's two types of people in life. One that kind of likes to get the position and the glory and let others do the work for them. And others that are just work forces like you and to some extent, me. I research very much when I do my shows. And I remember having a boss once that he had an inbox. It was like, I'm trying to see, see my hand. It was like this big. And every night after he would leave, I would go in and I would start trying to whittle down his inbox because I knew that that was the work of our team. But he was only concerned about what his boss and his boss's boss were specifically interested in. And let, you know, this was in cable TV marketing. I worked for A&E Networks. And let the rest of the clients be damned, you know, but I'm like, no, you know, somebody in West Hartford needs marketing materials from us, so I'm going to make sure they get those materials. And that was just the kind of work ethic that I had. And I, and I recognize a kindred spirit in you. And I, and I feel like you would do a great job on that council. Which leads me sort of to my next question. We're still talking about process before we talk about all the problems in the city. But there's so many consultants. It seems to me, I've never seen so many consultants. I've moved to this town and they're getting a consultant for this and a consultant for that. And consultants charge a lot of money. And what I'd like to know is, why aren't the city staff doing all this research? I'm sure they're perfectly capable. Or the boards and commissions, the members of the boards and commissions. I mean, I'll give you an example that I found out about. We can discuss this issue because it's very important, the homeless. And there are people on both sides of that issue. Or I should say that think it should be treated differently. And that was the Ramada Inn. Now, the Ramada Inn was kind of default housing for the homeless during the pandemic. And the people who were in charge of running it admitted to me that they had not done this before, that mistakes were made, that they would have done it better. But it's not like anybody else was telling them what to do or giving them advice or helping them. And then so there were some issues that the neighbors justifiably were concerned about and they formed that group, East Asheville for Wellness and Safety. They had a petition. They had 600 signatures on the petition. They were doing what they were supposed to be doing. Meanwhile, there was a group called the Anchor Collaborative that came to my attention that was a coalition of about 14 different entities that do, that deal with the homeless. And they came up with this really elaborate plan, very detailed plan as to how they would turn the Ramada Inn into emergency shelter. Esther Manheimer was made aware of that plan. I don't think any of the other city council members were. And the plan just kind of died. And one of the women who was like kind of leading that up told me that the collaborative itself didn't feel that they should be doing political lobbying. That they thought it was in the bag that Kathy Ball was championing that building to be for the homeless. And then Kathy Ball left the city. She got a position as city manager in Carver, I think it was. And Emily Ball, no relation, was kind of left holding the bag. And as a result, all this political pressure, because the citizens, the East Asheville Wellness and, they did what they were supposed to do as activists advocating for their position. They won the day because the people, all the well-meaning people in Asheville that are concerned about the homeless and don't think they should be criminalized and don't believe in sweeping up these encampments, they sat at home. They didn't come out in support in the same number. Maybe at the council meeting they did. There was a lot of testimony. But in private, these other actors were working their way and they stopped this emergency shelter. What I'd like to ask you, this is another kind of putting you on the spot. If you were sitting on the council that night and it came to your vote, would you have voted for that for that Ramada Inn to continue as an emergency shelter?
I don't know. I can't give you an absolute answer to that one way or another because I have not, I've not been privileged to all the conversations that happened out of the public view. And that's part of the problem, right? out of the public view. And that's part of the problem, right? We don't know who all the actors were in that conversation. I don't know what information was presented. Uh, you know, there was a petition. That's great. There were some folks who thought that their perspective was being represented by a staff person. I haven't seen documents about this. I don't know who had conversations with whom. Virtually every vote that I've been watching over the last however many years has been a black box operation. Whose information prevailed? Whose voice was heard in private? I don't know. So I feel that as a as a representative, I want to let people know. Every conversation that I have about business that's coming for city council, I'm taking notes. I'm documenting communications and every week I'm posting a report that says, here's who I talked to, here's what we talked about, and here's how it's influencing my thinking. I'd like to hear from you what you think so that I can take your perspective into account as I formulate my vote. Because when I get up there and it's time for me to vote, I want people to understand how I arrived at my perspective. I don't feel that I have any confidence at all in understanding how current council members are arriving at their opinions.
Well, getting back to the original question about the consultants, do you think that the city is relying too much on consultants and spending too much money on them and not charging staff with doing some of this research or their boards and commissions?
I think that it's a multiple, it's a multiple layered problem. I think the first problem is mindset. I think that Asheville still thinks of itself, the city government and the way we do business as a, as a city government, Asheville still thinks of itself as kind of a small quaint quirky fun. Everybody knows everybody town in the mountains. And we're, you know, we're cool and hip and we do neat fun things. It doesn't think of itself as what it is becoming, which is a relatively populated, complex environment with a lot of competing interests and a diverse and growing population. What that means is that in the past, I think that because of budgetary issues and because of limited staff availability, that folks have become accustomed to looking outside for expertise. But the reality is that Asheville is home to a lot of very highly competent, experienced, educated, clever people who are available both to serve in a volunteer capacity on boards and commissions, but also available for, for paid local consultation. And they have the advantage of really understanding the unique environment that is Asheville and they have the local connections to be able to gather on the ground data and perspectives that an outsider often does not do a good job of doing. I mean, I could cite examples. So I think, so there's, first, there's an attitude issue. Then there's a budget and staffing concern. And then there's just the desire often to have what is purported to be an objective outside opinion, right? There's the notion, if you bring a consultant in, oh, they're going to be objective. But we also know from experience that governments can shop for the consultants that provide the perspective that they believe is in, in the best interest of the city. Notion that you're necessarily get an objective view from a cons, from a consultancy is not always borne out in reality.
Yeah, another one of the candidates said the same thing. I can't remember if it was Will or Allison, but one of them said the exact same thing. Um, about consultants. It's the same thing with expert witnesses in a legal trial.
Right.
I want to ask you another process issue before we move on to some of the more substantive issue issues. Uh, and because it's in the news today that Jean Freeman resigned as the superintendent of the Asheville City Schools. And it's no secret that people were not satisfied with him. I was paying attention very carefully closely to the Asheville Primary School situation last year where again, a group of parents and teachers and concerned citizens lobbied to keep that school open.
Yes.
Same thing happened. Jackie McCarg, who was the deciding vote on the school board, moved out of the district. They put in new school board members and they voted to close the school. Didn't matter how much public comment they had that night, how moving that public comment was. Their mind was made up. They were going to close that school. And um, I think what happened was the appointed members of the school board. And I was also following that very closely. Uh, you don't have a real powerful teachers union here in North Carolina because this is a right to work state. But you do have an association of teachers that worked very hard and diligently to interview all of the applicants for school board. And a small committee of the city council made up of three members uh, totally disregarded the recommendations of these, um, of, of the educators and put in who they wanted to put into. And this was another reason why everybody who was advocating for an elected school board said, this is why we need to have an elected school board because these kinds of things happen. Now, I don't necessarily think the situation gets any better when somebody is elected because then you get the influence of money and politics and who's contributing to your race. And specifically, I don't think this is going to be an issue here in Asheville, but in Los Angeles, there are people that are elected to school board whose campaigns are very heavily financed by the charter, the California Charter School Association. And so for the last few years that I was living there, that board was dominated by charter school board members. Now again, I don't think that's going to be an issue here, at least in the beginning. But um, were you paying attention to that process and what were your thoughts at the time? How would you have done things differently?
It's not clear to me how much control city council has either prior to the switch or especially now that uh, it's going to an elected board. Personally, I feel that an elected board will be an improvement. If only simply because of the, of the potential for accountability through the electoral process. It's been clear that public input has had virtually no effect on the school board processes to date. So in my view, an elected school board has to represent an improvement. Is it going to be perfect? Undoubtedly not. But at least the folks that are on there know that if they disappoint too many people, they won't have a chance to serve any further. So that's something.
I guess I'm speaking specifically about how the most recent appointees were appointed and how the educators' recommendations were completely ignored. That was done by a small committee of the city council. Three members.
On, on the recommendation of the school board though, right?
Yeah, I mean, they had, you know, there's, I'll just tell you, okay, because I try to be transparent myself. I mean, I didn't do any reporting on this situation. I know certain entities that are doing reporting on this situation. I'm not liberty to speak about that. But um, there was some reports of collusion between some of the members of the school board and this council committee. When I say collusion, that sounds, that's a very big word. It sounds almost legal. But what I'm really talking about is you know, undue, not undue influence, that's. Well, you know, when people who know each other communicate, they can have outside, outsized influence, yeah, outsized influence. That's a fair way to classify it. Because somebody who's telling, somebody who you know and you're friendly with tells you something versus some people that you don't know, even though you supposedly represent them. You, you follow my drift here?
I do. And, and what this is for me is, the fact that this is an issue or a question is precisely the argument for why council should not be doing business the way that it is doing business. If there were meetings by council committees that were not on public record, that were not accessible to the public, that were not recorded, where these decisions were made, that, that's, that's outrageous. We should have had, we should, we should know the answer to this question. It shouldn't be a matter of innuendo or, you know, someone telling somebody something that there was something that happened. We should know who talked to who, when, about what. And that is precisely the reason why strict adherence to open meeting rules and doing the public's business in public on the record is so vitally important.
Yeah, I guess that's very idealistic because you can't control a conversation that happens in your home. If you've invited one of these people for a social gathering and you're chit chatting at your dining room table, or if you meet somebody in the supermarket. I mean, these are not public meetings. If you have them in your office, I imagine that, like you said, you should be noting everything down. That's a great thing. I wish our federal representatives would abide by that. But um, so many things happen informally. I don't know that you could really enforce.
That's us, that, it is no doubt that people are influenced by the people that they know. And there is a limit to how much you can regulate that. Of course, that's human nature. That's how, that's how people function.
Yeah.
That's not something that you can, you can ever stomp out and, and you know, frankly, I'm not even sure it would be desirable because then you might as well just make every decision by sheer numerical criteria.
Right.
So I guess, I, I mean, I don't know enough about this description, this situation that you're describing to have an informed opinion about it. And that's precisely the issue.
Right, right. Well, I just think whenever a recommendation of teachers is ignored, um, especially when that, those teachers took the time to meet with every candidate and asked them a series of questions uh, to demonstrate their proficiency with the, um, in, in issues that they were going to be asked to decide. And they overlooked those people that seemed to have the most proficiency in favor of people that didn't even know what the questions were. Like, what is that term you're using in this question? I mean, and I could talk to you more about this afterwards, but I just thought that was really egregious. Now, um, getting back to, because we're already halfway through our show, more than halfway through our show. So let's just run through some of the issues and let's see where um, you stand on them. Development. I mean, you were alluding to the fact that the mayor is very good at representing her interests. And um, what people are saying is that she represents developers. A lot of the locals think there's too much development in Asheville. We don't have the infrastructure for it. Um, you know, there's too much tearing down of neighborhoods, the Charlotte, we're Charlotte Street, we're not Charlotte. You know, that whole issue that happened last year. Um, where do you stand on um the issue of development and could there ever be too much development? How do you do development that's in line with what the neighbors want? Um, is there too much attention to tourists over locals? Your overall feelings about that?
Okay, so this is a, a complex, multi-part question. Let's, let's start just by laying the groundwork and saying Asheville is growing and it will continue to grow. People are moving here. Most of them who are moving here are moving here because they can afford to do so, even though it's ridiculously expensive now, right? But compared to where they're coming from, it still looks like a bargain to them.
I'll tell you, but me, I'm a prime example of that.
Exactly. Okay, so that's the perspective. And, and the, the expectation is that in the next, I believe it's ten years, we're going to have another hundred thousand people in Asheville, greater Asheville area. That's a lot of additional people. That's essentially doubling in size, right? So so we have some hard decisions to make. But what's important is how we prioritize them and what emphasis we put on, on, on what kind of growth we support. And this touches every aspect of the Asheville experience. I mean, I could probably talk for forty-five minutes on this. But let me say that my perspective is that the growth of Asheville needs to take hold most strongly in our local economy where we have homegrown businesses and enterprises that keep money in our local economy. The problem with the tourist economy in this town, which, which does contribute to our local economy, but it also export, it exports disproportionately its profits out of our local economy. And it pays the people who work for it terribly.
Yeah.
We had an opportunity when we had a hotel moratorium to do it, to do an actual study of the cost burden of tourism on the Asheville economy. We don't know the answer to the question, how many hotel rooms is too many for our local economy? We don't know what it, what each tourist visitor and the businesses that support that visitor cost our local government and our taxpayers. We don't know what the total burden is on our infrastructure. We don't know what local enterprises suffer from the advent of external companies coming in and colonizing our business environment. That's something that we should really understand. What is the true net benefit of tourism to the residents of Asheville? To the people who work here, to the people who live here. We don't have an answer to that question and we should. Because if you look just at the numbers, there's this rosy picture of, you know, the billions and billions of dollars that are coming in. But we're also paying for that in many, many different ways. Not the least of which is we're subsidizing it. We collect an occupancy tax, which then goes seventy-five percent back to the businesses for them to spend outside our economy on bringing more tourists in. So it's this vicious circle of sending money out so that people will come here that they can profit off of and then send the money back out again.
Well, everybody's talked about that TDA and they say that there's nothing really you can do about it on the local level. It would have to come from the state. But Andrew, Andrew Fletcher did think it should be boycotted. I mean, one of his ideas was we shouldn't be appointing anybody to it, you know?
Well, that's one, that's one strategy. Um, yes, it's true that legally we have no leverage. But we do have some leverage not, not just by boycotting appointments, which would make a statement, certainly. But we also have the threat of stop collecting the tax. Stop collecting the tax. Yes, that's a risky proposition, right? Because, you know, ten million dollars out of forty million dollars is ten million dollars more than you would have otherwise. But perhaps slowing the tourism juggernaut might give us an opportunity to invest, focus attention and nurture our local enterprises and grow them to bring the kind of jobs and internal vinegar, excuse me, internal vigor that would compensate for that. And frankly, you know, in a so-called market economy, it's hard for me to understand why our government is subsidizing an incredibly successful tourism industry. You know, if they had to pay for their own advertising, they might have to raise tourist, you know, charges on rooms by some amount. Would it be as much as two percent? Probably not. And would that keep people away? Probably not. So it would be interesting to see. So it would be interesting to see what happened if Asheville government said, you know, we're seriously considering no longer collecting this tax. Is it a negotiating lever? I bet it is. Something to consider.
Well, what about using that 25% to fund the kind of study that you were talking about at the beginning of your answer? Which is to figure out, you know, what benefit it does provide and where, what costs is it having?
Right. It seems to me that the city absolutely needs the answers to those questions. And it would certainly cost no $10 million to do such a study. In fact, I have every confidence that there are folks at UNCA and elsewhere in our business environment who could and who have the expertise to be able to do that kind of analysis and provide an understanding of what the tourist economy brings in and what it costs the city of Asheville. And we should definitely have an answer to that question.
Now, a related question, because you, you referred to low-paying jobs and you referred to subsidizing industries. I know that the city council wasn't asked to vote on the Pratt and Whitney plant. It was a, you know, county commission vote. But tomorrow I'm going to be going to reject Raytheon's big event at Bent Creek Park in commemoration of Earth Day because of the disrupt, not the destruction, that's a big word also, but pollution of the French Broad River caused by the construction of the Pratt and Whitney plant and all the trees that were cut down. And this is land that, you know, Jack Cecil gave to the county for $1. Now, maybe he owns it, maybe we still have, you know, private land in this country and capitalism. Whether we should allow people to commoditize housing is, is a big question. I think that's one of the reasons why we have such an affordable housing crisis, because we have all these, not so much in Asheville, but certainly in other cities, these big corporations like BlackRock coming in and buying all this, you know, housing stock and turning it into rentals. And then they're securitizing the rental agreements in the same way they securitized the mortgages, which blew up our economy. But people are saying that, okay, they are providing something like 800 jobs, averaging about 70,000 a year. These are good paying jobs. But they're also building parts for the F-35 jet engine, fighter plane, which is an instrument of, of death and destruction. Where would you stand if you were asked to vote on something like that? Because from what, you know, Bill Branion says, and he's running for county commissioner, Jack Cecil wants to bring in the entire, you know, military industrial complex into Asheville and have more of these kind of plants.
I don't know that that's true. I need to see some, some more evidence about that than what I've seen so far, let's put it that way. The incentivizing of businesses to come to the city is a challenging balance that, that representatives have to make. There's a lot of evidence to indicate that tax incentives for that sort of thing often don't pan out in terms of returning what is expected in terms of economic growth for people who work and live here. This is one reason why I believe so strongly that if, if we're going to invest tax equity in businesses in order to create good paying jobs, we should be doing it with local businesses. Because, you know, my strong impression is that one of the main reasons that Pratt and Whitney is interested in locating itself here is because we're a right-to-work state. And they were having trouble with unionization in, I believe it's Rhode Island or someplace in New England. I don't remember the details. So and also their average wage. It's important to recognize that average is not very meaningful in this context. What's meaningful is the median wage, which they never mention because the executives and the high-paid people are happily coming here and buying up expensive houses and drawing large salaries. I wonder whether the folks on the assembly line will be, you know, making $70,000 a year. I don't think so.
Yeah, good point.
Be that as may, my basic point is rather than providing tax incentives to huge outside interests, war mongers or otherwise, who will then also be exporting their mark by profit margins out of our community. We should be offering incentives to local enterprises. We should be incubating local businesses and we should be rewarding people locally who hire locally and who pay living wages. That should be the focus of economic development in our city.
Well, I'm going to send you some stuff that Code Pink has written about what they call the local peace economy. Because that's exactly what they're, they're talking about. And any work that they've done researching this, I know you as a researcher with a curious mind would probably be reading about it.
Excuse me.
Now, we've gone to the end of the hour, but we haven't discussed everything. Do you want to go for 15 more minutes?
Sure, because I know there's an awful lot of hot topic stuff that we've not addressed.
Right. I wanted to know if you wanted to say anything more about the hot topic of the homeless.
I would be delighted to.
Yeah. What's your position on how that situation should be handled?
Look, I understand why people find this topic so engaging and so distressing and so troublesome. It is a normal human emotional response to be confronted with the presence of people who are, who have fallen out of our mainstream expectations of normal life in society and who are living a scary, marginalized, dangerous, threatening feeling existence in front of our faces. And asking stuff of stuff of us that makes us uncomfortable or perhaps, you know, prowling around our homes, looking for items that are sitting on the porch or, or whatever. I get it. This is, this is deeply uncomfortable. Not the least because somewhere unconsciously, I think all of us fear that this could happen to us. We want righteously, righteous, righteously to believe that this couldn't ever happen to us. But these folks are evidence that it does happen to people. And the desire to kind of see them as other, to stigmatize them, to say, oh, these are people who are not deserving. They've chosen this. They've allowed themselves to fall into this circumstance. You know, that could never happen to me or to us because, you know, we're, we're good clean-limbed folks and we make the right decisions and, okay. So for me, the first and most important thing to say about this situation is that folks who are homeless are people. And they are people with troubles and they are all different. Every single one of them has a different backstory. Every single one of them has a different experience of trauma. Every single one of them has made perhaps some bad decisions, but different bad decisions for different reasons. And there is not a one-size-fits-all solution for this circumstance that we find ourselves in as a society. If there were an easy resolution to this, it would already be in place because this is happening in every community in our country. Every city of any substance or interest has this problem. And good solutions are few and far between. Because it's complicated, because it has systemic roots. This problem will not be fully solved until we have true safety nets in place for our citizens. Until we have healthcare on demand paid for, until we have mental health services for everybody. And probably to some extent, until we have a universal basic income in place. And none of that is happening anytime soon, unfortunately. What does that leave us as a municipality capable of doing? What we can do is mitigate. We can help. We can reduce suffering. Bear in mind that the people who suffer most from crime related to homelessness
are the homeless.
are people who are homeless. They're the ones who have experienced the most violence, the most theft and so forth. We cannot police our way out of this problem. Putting people into the criminal justice system doesn't solve the problem. In fact, it exacerbates it. It makes it worse. It takes people who are already marginalized and completely on the fringe and stigmatized and adds yet another level of stigma to them, which makes it even more likely that they'll ever find viable employment and so forth. And that they'll get their, themselves out of whatever substance abuse trouble that they're in or mental health challenges that they have. So how do we, how do we address this? I don't think there's one good answer, as I said. So what do we need to do as a municipality? We need to be agile. We need to experiment. We need to try a whole bunch of different approaches simultaneously on a small scale in a time-delimited experimental fashion. That means, you know, working with various not-for-profit organizations of all stripes that are trying to address this. And also trying some experiments that we haven't yet tried. You know, there's a lot of hullabaloo around the issue of sanctioned camping. I say, let's try a pilot program.
Yep.
Let's try it with 50, 50 tenths. Let's try it with wraparound services, with onsite security, with onsite sanitation and water services, showers, laundry, the whole thing, not in public parks, but on either public land or private land that is, I don't know. I know that there are some church organizations that have talked about making available some of their property for something like this or other advocacy groups that might be able to help make that happen. But we need to try, and also because no one's solution works for any particular individual, we need to try a whole range of approaches to this problem and see what works. And iterate. So if the first pass isn't, isn't as satisfactory as we'd like, we document, we measure, we see what is getting people from houselessness to housing and we iterate and we make it better each time. But the notion that there's some, that we can do an abracadabra thing and make these folks disappear so that we don't have to see them and feel uncomfortable and horrified by it. And I get it. It's bad for business and it makes people feel unsafe in their homes and neither of those things is good.
Okay, well, you, I get it. I agree with everything you said, especially with the sanctioned camping. Yesterday I used the wrong term. I said sanctuary camp, camping, when I knew it began with S-A-N-C.
Well, a lot of people refer to it as sanctuary camp, camping.
Oh, okay, okay.
I prefer sanctioned camping because that's what it represents. It represents the use of, of land for this purpose that has been agreed to by the people with control of it.
Yeah, and it's so much cheaper than, you know, the permanent supportive housing, so much cheaper. And you can do, there's these pallet homes that you can get for like $5,000. I mean, I can send you some stuff. I was doing a little research myself because I wanted to support Kim Roney, because she's the only one on the council that seems to, to like the idea. Let's talk about public safety. Now, I know that we, you know, there's this call to defund the police, a very unfortunate name because I think even people that believe in what it really means don't like that name either. But, you know, in effect, the police, we, it has been defunded in the sense that, you know, the police department has lost 40% of its officers. Either because, you know, they're not paying them enough or they were dealing with the George Floyd protests and they said, we don't need to deal with this anymore, whatever the reasons are. We don't have enough police and the police are, you know, there was an article about these are the kinds of crimes we're not responding to right now. So what do you think about public safety and the police? And what reforms would you implement if you were elected?
Okay, so I have some, I have some views on this topic. Part of the challenge that we have here is a cultural one, which is that over the last several decades and more, 30 years plus going on, the police have become increasingly more culturally and visually militarized. And there has become a, a greater divide between police culture and civilian culture on, in the perception of everybody, I believe. That is particularly perilous when we end up in a situation of, you know, civil protests where all of a sudden you have heavily armed police confronting unarmed demonstrators who may be behaving badly in some cases, but in many cases are just peacefully protesting. And here's the thing, if you kit up a person with lethal weaponry and with body armor and you put them behind a shield and they're ready to go to war like they're Storm in Fallujah, that has a psychological effect on everybody concerned. It makes them feel like a warrior. If they have all this equipment and armament, shouldn't they be using it? Why else? They must need it, right? If they have it, they must need it. And therefore they should feel free to use it. And, and the people confronted with this, the citizenry confronted with this finds it intimidating, aggressive, scary, off-putting and, and also deeply worrisome and, and disturbing. So this in itself is problematic from the beginning. I would like to see, let me tell you about two conversations I had with members of the police, local APD. One was with a nine-year veteran of the force who is renowned for effective community engagement. And I asked this officer, in your nine years on the force, how many times have you deployed your service weapon? How many times have you unholstered your service weapon in the line of duty? And that officer said, zero times. And I said, what about your taser? How many times have you felt that you might need to use your taser in nine years on the force? And the officer said, zero. Okay. So why is every beat cop armed to the teeth? Why? It's intimidating to the public. It's not needed in the vast majority of cases of interacting with the public. Now, certainly there are occasions where an armed force is prudent and appropriate. I, I have no quarrel with that. But the vast overwhelming majority of interactions with the public do not require lethal force potential. And I think that a police force that understood that their role was not the potential to escalate to deadly force at a moment's notice would conduct itself quite differently in interacting with the public.
So are you saying that the police should be unarmed like they are in, in England?
I'm saying that for the overwhelming majority of police time interacting with the public, they do not need to be armed. Yes. And I also think that there are plenty of ways that, you know, de-escalation training, all, you know, nonviolent communication, all kinds of skill sets that can go into training. And in fact, unarmed, unarmed conflict, you know, skills are, are available as well. And in fact, unarmed, unarmed conflict, uh, you know, skills are, are available as well that. I think that the, the concern that I have is that when you have a police force that is being trained to reach for a weapon in a situation where all of a sudden they feel personally threatened, that there's no intermediary steps to take, is, is, is terrible stuff waiting to happen?
Yeah.
Having said all that, I've also heard, I had another conversation with a highly placed person in the police department about recruitment issues. And he spoke to me at length about, um, morale concerns, about trying to bring people, uh, to the city when there's been lots of negative publicity about the police force and all this. And I understand and I hear those concerns. I asked this person, how many positions did, needed to be filled in the department to help turn things around? What was the number needed to make a difference? And this person said, five police officers, mid-career people who understand community policing and who value, uh, personal integrity and, uh, community engagement and have great communication skills. Because if, if you can bring those five people here, they can bring up the next generation of raw recruits and train them to serve the community in an effective and, uh, protective manner rather than as warrior, warrior, uh, presences in our community. And I asked him, well, what's, what would it take to get that sort of person here? Are, how, how are you recruiting to get that kind of person? Are, are you appealing to people with a deep commitment to civil, civil rights and human dignity and, um, or are you putting up billboards of young ex-military folks who are armed to the teeth and are ready to, you know, fight the bad guys? So there was kind of a moment there about that. And then I said, other than salary, what, what other, uh, things would bring such folks to this community? And we talked about the importance of having all of the police force, but in particular, these very influential mid-career, mid-level folks being embedded in our city, living here, being able to afford to live amongst the people that they're serving and protecting. And, you know, that makes me think that there are some very good arguments for devoting police funds to making sure that the people who work for the police department live in the communities that they're policing.
Well, I agree with you and I also agree with the more pacifist, uh, approach to policing. You know, I was blown away when I saw Michael Moore's film movie Sicko back in two thousand and four in which how he showed how in Denmark, they had, you know, murderers living on farms and they showed them cooking these gourmet meals using kitchen knives. And it was a completely different approach because we know that our prison system doesn't rehabilitate at all. And in fact, it can take people that are not hardened criminals and turn them into hardened criminals once they're finished doing their sentence. So if you take that whole approach and there's a whole movement, the abolition movement, forget about the prison reform movement. There's a movement to abolish prisons. And you bring that down to the community level and you use the term community policing. When I interviewed the current sheriff of Los Angeles, we were all supporting him. All the progressives were supporting him. And when he got into office, he completely flipped on us and we were just aghast at what he became and how he pulled the wool over our eyes. But I was reviewing, um, he spoke to the Field the Burn Democratic Club. And yes, that's what it was called, Field the Burn Democratic Club. And he was saying that he remembers when he was a kid growing up in Rochester, New York, the cop on the beat would bring home his older brother and say to the parents, yeah, Joey was getting into some trouble downtown. He better take him. And he said, and his father hit him upside the head, you know, not that I condone that. But, you know, it was a different era, like what you're talking about now, where you have this militarized police force looking like they're an invading army versus being in the community, knowing the people and trying to be there to stop a crime before it happens. Cause everybody knows the police don't stop crimes because they come after, they come in after the fact. And, and, um, I'm just wondering if you feel that, cause you're talking about local people, not importing people. Set up, fund a class, a pilot project, as you say, at A B Tech, like a little police academy where we're training people in this method that you're talking about who are concerned with civil rights and treating people as human beings, not as like beating up the bad guys. Couldn't that be something where, you know, we can take our own homegrown kids and mold them into that kind of police officer that you're talking about?
Uh, it's an intriguing idea. I, I, I don't, I, I can't say I have a, 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 a a well-formed view on that. I did want to add one important thing, which is, I've mentioned this a couple of times and there's some interesting, uh, studies and, and, uh, a current, uh, program in Denver called the STAR Program, which is a support team assisted response team and it's paramedics and clinicians and E M Ts who go to calls that are not, uh, non, they call non-acute calls where, where imminent violence isn't the big concern. And they have diverted two thousand two hundred and ninety-four calls for service from the police department, uh, you know, police personnel to these service providing folks. And they've been doing this with tremendous success. And it has taken a, a big burden off the police department to do the things that the police department is best equipped to do. And it has turned these other situations over to folks who are able to resolve situations without violence and get people to the help that they need in an effective way. It saves money and it's effective and they have never once had to call the police for backup in a violent situation. Not one time out of those twenty-three hundred calls. This is something we could easily do here in Asheville in conjunction. Probably want to team up with the county as well to do this, but, but we have the resources to do this. And perhaps if we would take those burdens off of the police department, we wouldn't need to staff up to as high a degree as we were, we had prior. We, we might only need to add seventy-five percent of the vacancies instead of a hundred percent of them. And the money saved from that could be used for this highly specialized but very effective uh, alternative nine-one-one response, uh, unit. And this seems like something that is again, once again, ripe for a pilot program to see whether it would work and what the response to it would be. I think, I think it holds tremendous promise.
Well, you know, I'm sure you've read, because you seem to be an avid reader, that we have a dearth of mental health professionals in this country right now. And this came out during the pandemic. There simply aren't enough professionals, whether they're, you know, marriage and family counselors, licensed social workers, um, clinical psychologists, to treat the people that have the money to pay them, much less poor people or, you know, homeless people. So I feel like it's great to talk about wraparound services for the homeless shelter or psychologists going out to handle these calls, but I just don't know that we have the people. We don't need to discuss that. I just wanted to bring that up. Um, but I do want your take on, you know, the cost of living in Asheville because we cannot set a minimum wage, unlike other cities. We cannot say that, okay, Asheville has determined that the living wage is seventeen dollars and seventy cents. So that means everybody here has to pay that. Now, because of the Great Resignation, people have been raising the wage and you can probably get fifteen dollars an hour for most minimum wage jobs. But then they're not being given enough hours. Like my son is, 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 you know, as I say at every show, has ADHD, couldn't get through college and is now doing the minimum wage job thing. And they don't give you a schedule until two days before the week begins. So if not, you can have a second job. And then if they're not busy, they let you off an hour or two early. And they can get away with that too, because all they're obligated to pay you for is four, four hours in the day. So combine that with the fact that rent has gone up twenty-five percent because housing is a commodity in this country. And, um, and people even who have college degrees can't necessarily get jobs in their field. You've got an affordability crisis. Now, without being able to necessarily raise the wage on a municipal level, there are things that a municipality can provide to lower the costs of things. And the two that I wanted you to weigh in on were public transportation and childcare. Uh, my friend who is running for reelection, and I tagged you in this because I wanted to give you the heads up that I'd ask you about this for Beverly Hills City Council is saying that Beverly Hills should provide free preschool for every resident and for every employee in the city. And I asked him, well, you asked him, what's the budget of Beverly Hills? And I asked him, how many people is this going to affect? How much is it going to cost and how are you going to pay for it? I felt like a Republican asking him, how are you going to pay for it, you know? Um, and he said, I don't need to know that right now. I just need to, we point a study session, you know, a committee and we, and we figure that out. But at least he's thinking outside the box. And you, being an outside the box thinker, I figured you would appreciate that. So what is your thinking on ways we can cut costs, uh, for people living here?
Let's talk about transportation because I've, I've been, I've been starting to investigate this more. Unfortunately, I don't yet have the data that is really needed for me to truly understand the status quo that we have. And when I say the data, I'm talking about detailed ridership data. Who travels from where to where, when? What's the real demand currently with our less than adequate public transportation system? And then what is the possibility to grow that and to make it more convenient, more agile, more available and more useful for the people who truly need it? When I look at our public transportation system and indeed the public transportation systems of many cities like Asheville, what I see is a lack of vision and a reliance on old patterns of how to do public transportation. And I think that this lack of imagination is crippling our ability to come up with better solutions. Buses, as they are currently run, it's just, it's just not a good way to do this. Particularly in an environment like Asheville where we have all these different neighborhoods all over the place. We, yes, we have some main thoroughfares and public transportation is often on them. But we also have all this hilly topography and we have people spread out all over who can't easily get to a main thoroughfare and so on. So I've been thinking about this a lot. And it occurred to me, we have potentially the technology to solve this problem. And by that, I'm talking about a combination of scheduled service routes combined with on-demand surge, uh, additions with real-time data from riders. It works for ride share apps, it works for, you know, delivery from, for food. I mean, we can, we have the technology to make this work. So what I envision for Asheville is a future where the public transportation system is, one, completely electric, two, small buses, small buses. We don't need these, you know, thirty-six seat buses that only have four people riding in them for a, a, a substantial portion of their journey. No, we should have these small buses that show up when people's cell phones indicate that they've arrived at a, a station and that, that change their routes in order to pick up people who are waiting because they know where they are and they know where they're wanting to go. We can do this. We can make a more agile, more convenient, more reliable, money-saving, effective and enjoyable public transportation system. And it would be good enough that tourists would like to use it. It would be good enough that car owners would like to use it because they wouldn't have to worry about parking and they wouldn't have to worry about, you know, sitting in traffic behind the wheel. And an increased ridership would reduce the number of cars on the road. It would be good for our carbon footprint. There's just so many reasons to think more creatively and proactively about the future of public transportation without being entrenched in these old models of, oh, there's a timetable and these routes always take this X amount of time. And, you know, people need to be in, all in the specific spot at a specific time to get it. We don't have to be locked into that position for the future. We can do a lot better and we can take a lot of cars off the road in the process. And we can serve the people who really need public transportation because they can't afford to have a car and they're working odd hours and so forth. We can make sure that those people can get where they need to go safely and inexpensively.
Yeah, I believe that there was a worker-owned co-op type of ride share here in Asheville. It was called A V L Ride, but I think it might've been, uh, of the pandemic, unfortunately. But you're absolutely right. I think back about how I had my car serviced and a person who was riding the shuttle, you know, because if you're within five miles, I think they give you a free ride back home while your car's being serviced. For fifteen miles, twenty miles, whatever it was. He was telling me that he retired here, but he got so bored being retired that he's taken this job, you know, working for Hunter Volvo, driving people around. And there's a lot of people like that. There's a lot of senior citizens that are retired and lonely that have cars and may enjoy doing something like that. And, and like you said, with the work schedules being what they are, not everybody has to be at the same place at the same time on every week, you know? So things change and like, not so much the surge pricing, but I remember up in San Francisco, you could spend less money if you wanted to share a ride on Uber, you know? Would stop and pick somebody else up on your route and you can definitely do that with technology. So the city may want to do, like you say, a little pilot project. Um, now what about childcare? Cause everybody's.
I got nothing for you on childcare. I mean, I know that all over Europe, it is standard for employers and governments to provide childcare for their, um, employees. It's government subsidized and it works great. Here in our beloved U S of A, uh, the model is nothing like that. And, uh, I expect that the, I mean, childcare is a huge expense for people and hard to come by. I have a hard time imagining how Asheville city government is in the position financially to make that happen. That's the kind of, this is a program that needs to happen on the federal scale or the state level, maybe. But of course, right now in North Carolina, that's a complete non-starter. I think it's, I think it's an aspirational goal. I don't see it happening anytime in the immediate future.
Well, we now have gone to an hour and a half. And, um, I, I want you to be able to say anything that you feel you didn't get to say. Any other program that you really want people to know about, that you support, that you would implement if you were elected, before you tell them how they can get involved in your campaign, volunteer, uh, or donate.
Well, I want to be, I want to be really clear about how I am a process-oriented. how I am a process-oriented person and how democracy requires these principles of responsiveness, inclusiveness, transparency and accountability. And I want to reiterate that my pledge to the city, that if I'm elected to city council, I will practice what I preach. And I will attempt to model at all times the behavior that I would be trying to encourage my fellow council members and city staff to practice, which is to remember that we are doing the people's business and that it is incumbent upon us to involve folks early and often in the decision-making process. That government is a form of conversation. It's the way that a people talks to itself about the values that matter to it and negotiates the kind of society that it wants to see and to live in. We have to be open with one another. We have to have the courage to embody those values of transparency. We have to show folks how government is doing its business so that it can trust that it's being done in their interests, in the interest of our neighbors, of our friends, of our colleagues. This is the linchpin for the creation of any successful future policy. Ordinances, I mean, for example, I think that we need to completely revisit the Unified Development Ordinance. That's the zoning that determines what sort of activity and construction can take place throughout the city. What we have now has been around for a long time. It's had a lot of modifications and overlays done on it. I believe we need to start over with our vision for what the city can sustain and how it wants to grow responsibly. And we need to redo the UDO from scratch with that in mind. And there are all sorts of things that that would enable in terms of infill, in terms of commercial and residential mix that would make for much more walkable neighborhoods. There's a whole realm of ways of addressing housing availability that depend on zoning advances. So, but we can't do that by fiat from top down, just listening to a few so-called experts. We need to involve the community in the process of developing that new Unified Development Ordinance. I think it's essential to the healthy growth of the city. And it's essential that it be done in a spirit of openness, of inclusion, of responsiveness and transparency. So that people know that they can hold the decision-makers accountable for the outcomes, that we have measures and benchmarks that we're working towards that we expect and that we know how to respond when we get data that shows that we're not meeting the mark. So those are the values that I want to bring to the city council. And we can bring that change. We can shift the way that the city government does business and enhance people's desire and trust that their participation will be met with enthusiasm. It will be facilitated and it will make a difference.
Great. Thank you so much, Nina Tovish. Now tell people how they can find you and get involved.
At the bottom, this is my, these are my new signs that are coming at the end of the week. Tovish, number four, avl.com is the address of my website. When you get there, you will see all sorts of posts and articles and videos. You can read my response to every questionnaire that I've answered and more are coming. You can fill out a form so that you can participate in my campaign. You can request a yard sign. You can ask me to come and meet a group of your friends. I'd be delighted to do that. You can volunteer. There's also a donation link where you can donate securely via ActBlue. And I sure could use your help. I need to get a whole bunch of campaign literature printed. I have a great need for, for some cash infusion. That would be hugely helpful. And you can read more about my life story, about my values and what I hope and expect that I'll be able to do as your representative on city council. And thank you so much for taking the time to listen to this. My apologies for my wheezy coffee, hacky voice today and for the technical challenges we had, but thanks for hanging in for this conversation.
Well, you know what? I wish I could vote for you. I don't live in Asheville. I live in Fairview. But you are eminently qualified and I love some of your ideas. And if you win, I'm going to be giving you some even more ideas. And I just want to tell the viewers that the continuation of this series is next week. On Monday, I'm going to be doing a show with some college students who have successfully formed unions at their campuses. On Tuesday, I'm going to be interviewing Maggie Ullman, who is running for city council. On Wednesday, I'm interviewing Courtney Booth, who's running for district attorney. And the following week, on the fourth, I'm interviewing Pepe Asabo and Liza Kelly, who are running for school board. And on the fifth, I'm interviewing David Hurley, who is running for sheriff. And I was just told by Nina that he's a Republican running in the Democratic primary.
Look at, look at his voting record and see what ballots he's voted for the last umpteen elections.
Yep. Well, it's an interesting strategy because as I told Nina also, I plan to vote for a Republican for the first time in all my natural born days, who is running against Madison Cawthorn. And her name is Wendy Navarez. Maybe have her on my show. I don't know. I don't think she's raised enough money to win. And, you know, because Cawthorn decided he was going to run in the 14th district and then backed out, went back to his own district. In the meanwhile, Chuck Edwards got involved and he's just your average bad Republican. He's not your extremist bad Republican like Cawthorn calling for insurrection. Wendy's actually a person who's been on every single government program you can think of. And she, her values are coming from compassion and, and this perspective. And so that's why I support her. And I think she also supports single payer healthcare, but she can't really say that and run in a Republican primary, sadly enough. And I know Nina wants to say something right now, probably that any Democrat, well, I'm not a Democrat anymore. I'm an affiliate.
I just want to add one thing that I totally forgot to mention this evening, which is I was extremely pleased and honored this afternoon to receive the endorsement from Equality NC. That's a big deal to me. I'm a proud ally of the LGBTQ plus community and I'm thrilled to have their support. I've also been endorsed as a, with a seal of approval from the Progressive Caucus of the Democratic Party and by the AFL-CIO of North Carolina and the Western North Carolina Central Labor, Labor Council. And I'm very proud of those endorsements and they reflect my values.
Well, I hope, like I say to anybody who gets endorsements, that they have their people do some boots on the ground for you, door to door.
I hope to call on them for that.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. And thanks for sticking with us for this very lengthy show, but it was really worth it. And, and share the show, please, especially with people who can vote in this election. I have a lot of viewers from out of state. They're all very impressed with you, Nina, but they can't vote for you. So please share the show, keep watching and have a good evening and a good weekend.
Thank you, Lauren.
Good night.